The purpose of this meeting is to serve as a public hearing for Mayor Layton's proposed 2016 general fund budget. Council will make their comments first and then we'll be open up to the public. There is no formal action taken on this budget tonight, so it is just a public hearing to allow council and members of the public to weigh in on the mayor's proposed budget.
Okay. Mr. George, any comments?
Well, yeah, I think a lot of the projections were, other than realistically untouchable. I mean, the early income tax is going up almost $900,000, which I don't see 100 new people moving into making $30,000, families making $30,000 a year to bring that up to, yes, $2 million. And I don't see the police fines increasing to $500,000, and the licenses fees increasing to $500,000, and the sale of property for $1 million. And I don't want this delinquent business privilege taxes collecting at $350,000, and the lien den return taxes at $100,000, and the health reimbursement for the health prevention at $200,000. Total about $3 million, which I don't see where we're going to be able to pay that off.
Yeah, I can talk or Brett can talk, but I mean, again, these are projections based on trends, historical trends, and we're seeing an increase each year. We've implemented several programs on the collection side that we feel very confident that these goals and these numbers will definitely be met, if not exceed them. As far as the $1 million in real estate, we have some great properties we're gonna sell that were actually working, and we may even have announced pretty end of the year, and two of them that will probably exceed that $1 million. So, we're very confident, my staff and I, on this. So, the $1 million in real estate, we got the Hotel Sterling, we got some other properties that developers are interested in. We picked up the real estate property that we got back in the fall. The city will have opportunity to sell next year, pretty clear. As far as the fines and the EIT tax, hey, look downtown. We have people moving in these bank buildings that are working class people. We just had the announcement of eBay, their expansion here in the incubator center. There's some exciting things that are gonna be happening here over the next four years that are gonna definitely increase the EIT tax. Otherwise, we wouldn't have done it. It's not a frivolous budget. It's a budget that if I was gonna be here for the next four years, especially if I was gonna be the mayor in 2016, I, along with my staff and my finance officer, would feel very, very comfortable with it. So, again, this is a legitimate budget. It's not a frivolous budget. It wasn't thrown together overnight, worked on it since July, and we're very confident it's a legitimate budget that will be able to.
As far as the earnings, are we on record to make this year's estimate?
The team?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on pace with last year. In 2014, actual was 12.6. So, we've seen steady increases over the years, so 12.7 seems to be okay.
Okay, as far as the fines go, they're pretty much based on trend. We just have become more efficient.
The delinquent fines? A lot of the delinquent fines involve third-party collectors, which we've just begun to implement. So, you know, based on outstanding $1 million, you felt that they were really.
The problem with some of those fines are, if you find guilty, they don't have the money to pay. You can't get blood out of a rock, no matter who goes after it. They don't have the money to pay, there's still not gonna pay. Bill could attest to how many fines are unpaid every year because people don't have the money.
Okay, but the fines that were in the budget were collected, okay?
Yeah, but they were $200,000 last year, and this year it went up to $500,000. I mean, that's $300,000. Well, the police, go with the police.
Oh, for the tickets?
Yeah.
The tickets, the tickets?
Not the parking, the fines, collection of fines.
First one specifically, do you have the number?
No, I don't have it. Well, I can put the number down. The police fines.
Here, I got the budget, show them exactly.
Thank you.
Hi, Tony, where are you looking for that? I think go to everyone else. Mr. LeDoux?
No, I had some questions about the fines and I had some questions about the police department's delinquent magistrate fines. But that was explained to me that the magistrate fines is something that we're already just doing this year. So, I'm good with what I, with everything that I had questions on, I'm all right.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brown?
No, my question will be resolved, I have no question.
Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Mayor, the concern seems to be on the revenue side of the House. I think the mayor did a pretty good job of explaining it, and I see the department heads are here. Mayor, is it correct that you reviewed these anticipated revenues with all the department heads and they are comfortable with those?
We've had meetings individually, and again, we implemented a program, and you know, Tony mentioned on the parking, parking fines, parking tickets, wherever, some are collected, some aren't, most of them are. And again, we have, we have a very aggressive, fully staffed parking board for the last six months to nine months that we didn't have because people have been injured. So, those numbers have increased, and again, I'll be here, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not gonna be the mayor, but I'm a city resident, so I understand what it, but. And again, these revenues may exceed their numbers based on the trend that we've seen in 2015 and 2014. These are pretty, Mr. Wilkes-Barre. Again, there's a lot of exciting things going on, a lot of development that you're gonna see that require permission to take out. So, it's, you know, the revenue has told us, don't get me wrong, you know, we're still through a sluggish economy. But, you know, for 12 years, we, this is my 13th budget, we provide solid budgets.
What we're looking at here when we compare, and I understand what the concern comes from, because we're looking at year to year, and in some cases, there is a very sharp contrast. And I know that your finance manager looks month to month or week to week in some cases, and looking for those trends. And that information, if we wanted to see that prior to the vote, is available for it, correct?
Yeah, proper administrators and proper department heads that make sure that its employees are doing their jobs on the revenue side, these numbers are maxed.
But Mr. Kittredge can provide up-to-date monthly, so that we can see those trends for ourselves and be more comfortable with.
Those trends heading in the direction we want them to go in, yes, I'm not negative.
Yeah, I can provide all the actuals, and back to what Mr. George was saying, I think.
It's 35,007. It's police department, the delinquent magistrate fines goes from 0 to 250,000.
I thought you were talking about the parking.
Well, that's it, and that goes from 200 to 450,000.
Yeah, I have that.
We met with magistrates.
I have the magistrate fines, that's a projection based on a third-party collector, and yeah, that's, that'll be through the county level. I mean, we've met with them, and that's an idea underway, but the parking violations, we up to 450 from 225 because of increased manpower throughout this year, and Saturday enforcement. So far, we're at 365,000 through October. And I mean, this budget, you have to keep in mind, it's on a accrual basis through the end of February. So, I mean, there's still.
But don't you think after people get so many fines, they're gonna start putting money in the meters, and you won't have that fine money?
No, I actually prefer that.
I agree, but then you're gonna see the meter jump up, you think, so.
Thank you. Back with the magistrate's fines, though, we've had numerous meetings with both magistrates in the county, with officials involved with the inflection program. Everybody's on board, and we think they'll, probably they'll come in for the next administration. And we're very confident that that number will be met, and most likely will be exceeded.
Any projections, correct? I mean, if you haven't any idea how it's gonna work, if they go after the people, if they have the money to pay it? I mean, that's always the problem, they don't have the money to pay the fines.
Based on the information we received, they go on a payment plan, or they pay upfront, or they go to jail?
That's always been the case.
It's never been personally pursued, we have a company that will personally pursue it. And again, projections, you're absolutely correct with projections.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Mr. George, if you have to?
Anyone from the public, or at least a comment on the budget this evening?
Name for the record, sir?
Sam Troy. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to quote you, by the way.
May I?
You may have pulled a wool over some people's eyes with this budget, but not over mine as a taxpayer and a citizen. I'm very concerned, maybe you can explain some of these things, questions I have, this budget is, as far as I'm concerned. I haven't looked at specifically, I only have looked at the prominent details of this thing. And I have here in front of me an article, an editorial written in the Times Leader, touching on some of the finer points or prominent points of this budget. Maybe you can respond to these. Earned income tax, now, my concern is that the revenue aspect of this budget is overestimated, and the expenditures aspect is underestimated. So, before my time runs out, I want to make sure that I do propose to, that council reject this budget and appoint an ad hoc committee made up of Mr. George, obviously since he's the next mayor, and whoever he considers to be a responsible, concerned citizen of the community, to get together and meet and try to make a more realistic budget that people can swallow. Because there are certain details in here that are very disturbing. Earned income tax, you project, and now, this is the point of this editorial. You wanna say this editorial is off, then you can tell me. But it's projected to rise by $830,000 to 12.7 million. They asked a question here, why so, are there more city residents working? I can't believe that. We have unemployment, one of the highest unemployment rates in the state here in this area. That seems to me, you know, an exaggeration. Building inspection revenue supposedly will rise by half a million dollars, $1.1 million. Is that contingent upon real estate sales that have yet to be produced, like Morgan Park and certain other parcels of land that the building inspection costs? Or maybe, I guess this is on existing properties, I don't know. The question is asked here, does that mean the pace of inspections are picking up, or inspectors are getting more nitpicking? I would like your attention on this, Mr. Mayor, it's only common courtesy, I mean, I'm a concerned citizen.
I'm writing stuff down, Sam.
The collection, the delinquent magistrate fines has been discussed already. But probably the most disturbing point here, sales of, this was in the last budget, I know. You're projecting revenue from parcels of land that have not been sold yet. And here, sales of city-owned properties are expected to bring in an additional $600,000 for a total of $1 million. And I ask the question, what's on the market and who's buying? As far as I know, a lot of these parcels, there have yet to be any bids to be put forth on these parcels. On the expenditure side of things, I'm also very concerned, because, for instance, I, again, I did look at, maybe you can explain this to me, but the, there's a lot of, you know, interest and debt service to be paid, but I guess that was taken into account to a certain extent. Was the full impact of that debt service taken into account, especially with these bonds that you're proposing here, to this bond issue that you're proposing to float? There are a lot of other expenditures, you gave everybody, everybody in the, well, it's only too well, 3% cost of board increase to all the employees, when people like, you know, such as the common, ordinary citizens of this city are struggling in some cases, not only to make ends meet, but to put food on the table, which I think was uncalled for. My total point here is that even though taxes have not increased, and I'm grateful for that as, don't get me wrong, I think that was a good thing. But I think basically this is a smoking mirrors budget. It's a blueprint for disaster, it's gonna hamstring Mr. George and his administration if it's adopted without any amendations. Because he's gonna find eventually that there's a shortfall of money here, and he's gonna be compelled to raise taxes, as I see it. I mean, I hope to God that's not the case. But I think that you could have done a lot better, a lot more homework, to try to make a more realistic budget in terms of the revenues, and to make a more realistic assessment of the expenditures. And if you wanted to, if you really were concerned about the taxpayers, as you claim you are, and you claim you have done a lot in your 11 years, the four people here have voted for you almost 100% of the time, every part of your agenda. I think that's a call for shame, by the way, not pride. But you have raised taxes about 80% in this city, and I think it's about time, this budget should be rejected. A new budget should be, should be formed by this ad hoc committee that I'm talking about, and perhaps it could be seen fit, not just to keep taxes the same, but to actually lower taxes, God forbid. You've raised it 80%, it's about time the taxpayers get a break in this community. Thank you.
I agree, I think covered all his questions, his opinion. He said it's 13 years, I think it's the same script he comes up with every year, so. I'm proud of this budget, I'm not gonna hide from this budget, if the next mayor wants.
Yeah, here's the thing, what about that 3%?
For what?
Well, I'm sorry, earned income tax projection. It's supposed to rise to 12, how do you come up with that figure?
Based on the percentage I received in 2014 at 12.6, 2015 is not completed. We hit 12.6 in 2014, and it's up to 12.7 in 2016, which is a reachable percentage. Again, this is not a frivolous plan.
Mr. George, I can't have you go back and forth, you had your opportunity.
Again, Mike, I think I've answered most of those questions in the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Name for the record, sir?
Hello, Mr. President. Bob Kalabaski. I just wanted to tell you, there's no sense in saying nothing here, because it's really a waste of time to come down, because basically, you people are just puppets, and the only one that really stuck up for the taxpayer was Mr. George, who's gonna be the next mayor. But I think next year, we're gonna find out, once everything is thoroughly investigated. Because all this is a shell game. If this was a private business, him and his staff would have been out here already for some of the nonsense that went on here. But basically, our city is in financial troubles. And our taxes, when he said 80%, I believe everything's gone up 144%. So, we're the ones who were strapped, but next year, we'll find out the truth, that once everything's gone through. And basically, it's a waste of time, I almost, I just get sick to my stomach coming down here, because it's such a waste of time. Because you're not gonna, no matter what I would say or what anybody else says, you don't listen anyway. But I think next year, we'll know the truth, and the reason, like I could say, I guess I have some credibility now. People like Frank Sore, at least the taxpayers made the right decision in putting somebody in that's gonna be able to take a good look at it. That's why Tony George got elected. I think people lost faith in this, definitely lost faith in this administration. This isn't a balanced budget, this is just another one of the shell games, and next year, we'll know the truth. It's really just a waste of time to come down here, I don't know why I stopped.
Just one question to the body here. If this were a private business, it would not be seen as a public business. We're audited by numerous auditing firms, our own city audit, the federal government, the state government, plus we go through San Antonio Court and New York City, so there's no shell game here. This is legitimate, he doesn't owe me time, I was.
I don't? Well, how come we paid a $30-some thousand fine over that? Because you didn't listen, and you people should go after him for that. He didn't listen and cost everybody in here over $30,000.
Thanks, Bob.
That's right.
Does anybody else care to comment about the budget tonight? Name for the record, sir?
John Toski on the line. I just, you don't have to do that.
You can.
I know.
Go ahead.
Don't worry, Tom, I tuned you once in federal court, and we're gonna tune you again. Remember the $250,000 they paid me because of your stupidity? How funny was it when you had to pay $200,000? I had to get paid $250,000. Smile all you want, you punk, you just better hold Leo until I'm starting singing, because you're gonna blow another kiss. Your ass is gonna get it someday, nice and wiggly, you're nothing but a piece of shit.
Well, he is a piece of shit. I just wanted to ask that, you were talking about properties that you just sell. I just wanna know which properties, if you, that are on the market that you think are gonna sell.
We have the Hotel Sterling, the Warren B. Williams lot. We also have part of the hotel, come in the play over the next four years, that moved down South Main Street. Plus numerous street developments, three properties acquired, but in late fall or late summer, we bought. Remarkable, Green Creek title that will build, sell off to potential investors and slash adjacent properties.
Okay, so just, but basically Sterling and down there, that's the bigger one, the big ones.
And Warren B. Williams.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We're gonna do this till 6 o'clock and do our work sessions. Thank you.
Authorizing a firm, the National Management American Water, installation of water main extension, the Anthony's portion of Screw Street, the City Wilkes-Barre, harden incorporation for the municipal authority, which expired, have to be re-upped or redone, the increases moving along, and authorizing the private party alley at City Wilkes-Barre. And a new item, which I didn't have my file relative to the Sore authority. The only one I contacted was Mr. Barrett relative to appointment. So, it'd be the same that we had the last thing, except the details was a former city PP devy worker did a fantastic job back to work as a source, pun intended, the name to Sore authority.
I thought we were supposed to have those people come back, so we could ask them those questions, see what their study came up. We still have that study. That's what we discussed at the last meeting, to have them come back.
Well, I thought you were gonna let me know if you really wanted, because nobody would.
I said I wanted, I don't know how much more clear I have.
Do you have any questions with which answers you might?
No, I wanted those, they did a study, we paid for a study, I'd like to see the study, we paid for it. I think you would be with that, though.
I remember the discussion about having them come back, I didn't know how it was left.
Well, that's, we wait for them to come back.
About my recommendation to these four authorities, if you just.
Oh, I can see they can be here Thursday, which right?
I can ask them to be here early, before the council meeting, if that's what you would prefer?
It'll work.
Well, I'd see them at the council meetings, everybody get here.
Well, they did have a public session before the.
Before the study, they haven't heard the study, I haven't heard the study.
Quick, some council members, Mr. George, did not, he was not aware of the public meeting, I thought council knew, and I thought it was a public side, so.
Well, there was public at the public meetings, so.
Their work session also.
But we can have them here, you tell me what they like, and I'll investigate them.
Please, Paul. Mayor, the vacant private party alley, what is that about?
What's behind the dress shop? From North Hampton Street to the Titan Building, to the hotel, there's an alley there.
Oh, okay.
If you, you can kinda see if you go down there, is that a part of this property?
Okay, I thought that's part of the parking lot, but it's not, it's.
It's, if you look at the parking lot, you'll see it's kinda closer to the buildings, that currently is there.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah, I didn't really recognize where it was at, you know.
Right in that general vicinity.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor, did I miss it? Did you have one other item regarding the sale of unbuiltable?
Oh, yeah, sure. It's a lot right at the corner of Beekman and Over Road, and as always, we offer it to the two adjacent property owners, and they're gonna take it, and they're gonna subdivide it for $2,500. It's that vacant lot right in the corner. So, the two property owners that bought that lot are going to, we're gonna sell it in billion, and they're gonna do the subdivision.
They're gonna take care of it there. And that was previously assessed for the same amount, correct?
Correct.
Our city assessor assessed the value based, it's unbeatable, and they're gonna cut it and have one part of the yard is confused with one gentleman. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, back with the sewer authority, and one of the other motions was to let the new council have some input into the sewer authority, and that was another reason why, originally I tried to take it until they got into office. So, they have a say, because George is leaving, or Maureen's leaving, and I'm leaving the council. And they should have input in the sewer authority. There's no rush, I can't see a rush, so I were pushing it through before they had the opportunity to have input and have their choice there. And that was the other reason we were holding off, besides.
Well, I asked last time, Tom, if anybody has anybody they'd like to recommend to sit on that board to give that to me. I didn't hear from any.
Well, I think they're waiting to get in council. I mean, they should have the opportunity to have input. I mean, they're not there, there's, you know, everybody should have input in, but nobody accepts it.
Well, you're still the council people, Mr. Brown.
This was actually brought up in our terms, so I believe that it should be us that acts on it.
But it'll be under, they're watched that it comes in, so.
Well, when things come, you're there watched, and it's time for them to vote on it.
Then all I'd like to do is urge them to contact your council person, to see if they have a person of interest who may, may wanna sit on the authority.
Thanks.
Oh, one more question on the articles of incorporation, what does that entail?
Really, municipal authority?
Yeah.
It's just to keep it moving, expiring billiards.
End of the year.
End of the year, so in other words, to keep it operating, you have to move it forward. And again, I've said this over and over and over, the previous mayor tried to sell it, I tried to sell it. The golf course was not constructed to make money for City Wilkes-Barre, it was constructed to provide recreational for the City Wilkes-Barre residents in the community, from what I'm told, based on how it was funded. It's no different than Holback Golf Course. Doesn't make its money, it's located in City Wilkes-Barre, it was donated to the City Wilkes-Barre from the Holback family for recreational purposes. It's no different than all the parks that we maintain, including Kirby Park, which is extremely expensive, Nazareth Park, all the playgrounds that you see, whether it's 18 or 19 throughout the City Wilkes-Barre, that costs the City Wilkes-Barre money every single year. They're there to provide recreational activities for the residents and visitors of the City Wilkes-Barre. They're not meant to make money, you will never make money. The main thing is the golf course that's located in Bear Creek, that's owned by the municipal authority, not by the City Wilkes-Barre, doesn't cost the City Wilkes-Barre a penny, and it was built purely for recreational for the region, and that's how it was funded. Can it be changed in the future? You gotta go to Harrisburg. I tried, I know Mayor Burdy tried, I know Mayor Bleeding tried. It may not happen in our lifetime, but that's not to say it won't happen, a hundred years down the road. But right now, we were told no. And Bill, you tell what comes.
Right, if we sell the golf course, all the money has to go back in, because it's Project 70 funding, came from the state. So, that's where the problem comes in, it's a catch point, too. If we sell any other individual lots, all that money has to be either returned to the state or the city has to provide a match of green space as well, which is very difficult.
And I believe both newspapers did extensive articles on it, and spoke with people in Harrisburg, and spoke with officials that know. And again, it's not something that's not decided by this administration or past administrations. It just cannot be done under the current time.
And DCED is actually watching now, and Mr. George, you're gonna end up getting calls on this very shortly as well. The, because of the speculation on it for the last couple of years, DCED wanted to, wanted me to provide them with any lots that were sold, any information that was there, because they wanted basically to make sure that it's not being sold, or if it is being sold, that the money is returned to the state because of all of the specific regulations, so.
Again, it's not about making money for the City Wilkes-Barre, it's to provide recreational activity for the community. Okay, thanks.
Comments, Mr. George?
Mr. LeDoux? Mr. Brown?
I have a colleague, but it doesn't have to do with the audience, it's kind of, it really, well, it doesn't, I'm like. I'm doing some research, a few drawings, a little stuff, and put on a whole, dealing with camping prohibitions and regulations. That actually came from one that was drafted for Allentown. And when I went on Allentown's website for the city, I was impressed by that, because they actually videotape all of the city council meetings, and they put it on their website for the city. I was just wondering if that's something that we could possibly look at in the future, is, I don't think it would be very costly, it wouldn't cost much, we could put something in the back, you know, that could be recorded for us, and then we just, down we go to the website, so. I'd like to make that recommendation, you know, if we could. May not happen in the time that Tony and Maureen are in our council, maybe for the new council, but I think it's important to show, anyone that wants to click on our website for the city, what happens at these city council meetings, you know. Now, I end them in any way, actually. actually shows exactly what happens. So, I just want to make that recommendation to my fellow council leaders.
Anything else, guys? Mr. Barrett?
There was some discussion on that, Mr. Brown, I was doing that, a couple of ways of doing it, screening it live, if people could actually see it live, if it actually occurring, and I think just recently, in speaking with Mr. Ryan, we felt that one of those issues that we need to research a little bit more and maybe discuss the incoming administration and the incoming council, maybe the law, put that together in our IT people, that would be the best way to proceed, but really, I think it's either way, whether it's recorded and published at some place or streaming live, I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I think we have to learn from other cities, their deposits that they bring to the city, and I was very impressed by Allentown. If you guys want to go on, on their website, I think you'll be impressed also by what they've done. That's all that.
Anything else, Mr. Barrett?
No, that's all, thank you.